Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Meeting of December 9, 2014. I'd like to thank the Garden Club for the flowers they always provide for our meetings. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Councilmember Ibera.
Here.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Here.
Mayor Ruane.
Here. Senator Jerry Hill, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
My pledge is to abide by the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We do have one announcement this evening. There will not be a city council meeting on December 23, 2014, the 4th Tuesday in December, and the 100th birthday of the city of San Bruno. Presentations, there aren't any presentations about the city council this evening. Review of the agenda, any changes to the agenda, anyone? Okay. Approval of amendments of the special city council meeting of November 25, 2014, and the regular council meeting of November 25, 2014. Any errors, corrections, or omissions? Seeing none, they'll be approved as submitted. The consent calendar, all items are considered routine or implemented earlier counts on action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested by a council member, citizen, or staff. Any action on the consent calendar?
Move to approve.
Second. Motion is second.
Through the chair.
Michael?
There was a request from a resident to pull some items from the consent calendar.
And I spoke to him and he...
Okay.
So there's a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Any question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Some public hearings? There aren't any public hearings this evening. Public comment on items not on this agenda, it is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this form to staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized pursuant to state law. Would anyone like to address the council under public comment? Just tell us your name and your street.
My name is Bob George. I live on Chauva Drive and as has become my custom at this time of the year, I'm here bearing gifts. For 10 years, I was a member of the Board of Directors of HIPHOP Housing. HIPHOP stands for Human Investment Project. It's a 40-year-old nonprofit engaged in trying to find homes for low-income people here in San Mateo County. One of the other things that we've become known for is a calendar, a children's art calendar. You've seen it in years in the past, just for the sake of a little background on it. These are artwork produced by kindergarten through 5th grade children. In this year's school, array of schools were in Foster City, Redwood City, Pacifica, and Heflin Bay. And it's our custom, because you've been so supportive of HIPHOP over the years, is to make sure each of you has one of these calendars. It's a bit of an anachronism. It won't upload on your smartphone. It just hangs on the wall and looks good. It's printed ink on paper. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. And thank HIPHOP, they do such a great job. And the calendars are some of my favorites. It's great. Thank you very much.
I should mention, Mr. Mayor, you were one of our judges last year and you know what a task it is to look at 300 to 400 pieces of art from children and whittle it down to 12.
It's a real chore, especially since a lot of the entrants were from San Bruno last year, so...
And I'd like to just, I'd like to add my two cents. They're pictures of houses. And I love having, I love having that calendar in my office. Sometimes I get ideas.
Okay. Anyone else like to address the council under public comment? All right, we'll go right into item 10, conduct of business. Our first item is to adopt a resolution reciting the facts of the general municipal election held on November 4, 2014, declaring the result and such other matters as provided by law.
Mayor and council, you have a resolution before you and on the front page, under section 1, the total number of ballots cast were 8,208. On Exhibit A, it shows that there were 5,382 who cast a vote of yes, and there were 2,511 who cast a vote of no. There's approximately a 315 vote difference, and those people didn't vote for Measure N at all. But overall, Measure N won unanimously, and I'm asking that you adopt the resolution this evening. And we'll be glad to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions from, for our city clerk or action by the council?
I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. It's a great pleasure to say aye to all of those. That's great. Measure N's going to be great for this city. Ken?
And I know there's been a lot of people that have supported it, and I just wanted to acknowledge them, not just the voters, but there were businesses in this community that saw it as a very good opportunity. And everyone that's worked on it for the last six years, whether it's from staff or the community, I think this is a very exciting time and really looking forward to implementing the new transit quarters plan. Thank you.
Item 10B, receive proclamations and hold a reception to celebrate San Bruno's centennial. We have a number of guests here this evening.
Your mic's not on.
Item 10B, receive proclamations and hold a reception to celebrate San Bruno's centennial. We have a number of guests here tonight from the federal government, the state government, different cities around the county, and I know they've all submitted proclamations to this. Some are here this evening, some aren't. But I'd like to begin with Katrina Rill, representing our Congresswoman Jackie Speer.
I'm Katrina Rill with Congresswoman Jackie Speer's office. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. The Congresswoman is in Washington, DC and can't present this proclamation, we don't really call them proclamation, herself tonight, but as you know, she had the great pleasure to make a special presentation on Saturday at the gala, which was wonderful. So I'm, she read the centennial, the San Bruno Centennial into the Congressional Record, which is the official history of the House of Representatives. So you will forever be in there. And I'm going to read a part of the proclamation for the Congressional Record. "Mr. Speaker, San Bruno's daily life is based upon families. Families go to its churches. Families flock to the sporting events, including nationally competitive youth baseball. Families play in San Bruno Park and walk through the community, enjoying the small-town atmosphere that makes San Bruno so special. There might be some millionaires, or some may perhaps a billionaire, living in San Bruno, but fundamentally, the community is where America's family live so they can enjoy great schools and great fun amidst like-minded people dedicated to hard work, honest commerce, and civic engagement. Its 40,000 residents are a wonderful mix of ethnic backgrounds and ages. Under the steady guidance of Mayor Jim Ruane and council members Rico Medina, Kennebera, Irene O'Connell, and Mike Salazar, City Manager Connie Jackson, and the wonderful city staff, San Bruno has reached the remarkable age of 100 years. And yet, it is still in its youth. No challenge, not even the 2010 explosion that cost the lives of eight precious souls and changed the laws of the nation, can dampen the love of residents of this beautiful city. Some like to define a city by history, but I, meaning Congresswoman Speer, prefer to defy convention and to instead define it by the predominant characteristic of its residents. When people ask me to describe San Bruno, I offer one word: optimism. It is the defining characteristic of those who create families, the defining characteristic of those who remain after their children have left, the defining characteristic of a long series of public servants who have walked in the hills of San Bruno, gazed upon its boundaries, and seen only a bright future in the land that lies between the wonderful College on the Hills, the Grand City Park in the south, and the Great Bay to the east and precious neighbors to the north. Optimism is the drummer boy and the parade of the San Bruno story."
Thank you, Katrina. And once again, thanks Jackie for us, please. It's very, very special. And it was a pleasure having her at the gala the other night. Senator Jerry Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. And I'm here with Ben Cohen from Assemblymember Mullen's office. Assemblymember Mullen is out of the country right now, and Mr. Cohen and I will be presenting this resolution. And I'll let Ben can hold it since he's a lot taller than I am. He does a great job of that, doesn't he? But, you know, the interesting thing is, in honor of the centennial, in honor of 100 years, when you look at the resolution, and this is from Kevin Mullen and myself, in celebration of the 100 years of the city of San Bruno. But as you read the resolution, it talks about all of the things the city has done and a lot of the historic points of interest over those 100 years. But what it doesn't talk about, and, excuse me, it doesn't talk about the spirit of the city. That's what's missing from this, and that's what I wanted to share tonight. That spirit in the council, the spirit in the staff, the city manager and the wonderful staff that you have. That spirit is what has brought this city to the point of greatness. And it's the courage in that spirit. It's the courage that you've exhibited. It's the strength that this city has. That's what this 100 years is about. And thank you for being part of my community and being part of this family of San Mateo County, because it's very unique and it's very strong in and of itself. But it means a lot, because your spirit, your courage, and your strength has what has brought great change over the last four years. And that change would not have happened without your spirit and this city's strength. So thank you for that. Thank you for the 100 years. You are a lesson and an example to all of us for what you have done. Thank you for the 100 years. Ben?
Jerry, thank you very much. Ben?
Good evening. Now, admittedly, I wasn't around in 1914, but I did a little bit of research, and I found a few facts that I thought were sort of interesting to provide some context for where we've been and where we are now, perhaps where we're going.
You're on live cable, so...
Okay. So here we go. Babe Ruth was a rookie, stamps were two cents, and commercial flight got off the ground in 1914. Now, stamps are a little more expensive, but they last forever, which is fantastic. A professional baseball hero perhaps is being born somewhere this year, and our flight experience is very different. But the one thing that's remained constant is that San Bruno's been there for those things. And so on behalf of Assemblymember Kevin Mullen, I would like to recognize the centennial and wish San Bruno a very happy birthday and many more.
Thank you, Ben. And thanks to Kevin, please. From Foster City, you have Art Kiesel.
Well, I wasn't around 100 years ago either, although some people say I have, but I spend most of my time working here in San Bruno, trying to build up the business tax license most during the days. Irene knows that all too well. But I think 100 years, it's a long time in today's society. Lots have changed. You know, I was looking at the pictures out in the hallway, and you have a real appreciation for where, how far we've come and how far we as a society and how far San Bruno has come in 100 years. It demonstrates a real perseverance of the city and the people and the historical preference and historical attitudes that they've had and respect for the historical attitudes. So Foster City, on the other hand, we've been around since 1971. We're just a baby. I hope Foster City doesn't sink in the bay between now and then in the next 100 years, so. So my congratulations to San Bruno, and I think we've all been through some good and bad times, and I think we should all be thankful for right now for the good times that we're having, so thank you.
Thank you, Art. Much appreciated from the city of Foster City. Jeffrey G., Redwood City.
Mayor Ruane, Vice Mayor Medina, council members, San Bruno family. It's an honor to be here this evening, represent the Redwood City Council and the Redwood City community. Following the footsteps of our history here, it's hard to really imagine that when San Bruno became a city, someone named Woodrow Wilson was president. And you've had a number of celebrations over the last several months. I'm going to have to take some notes from Councilmember O'Connell, because we have a birthday celebration coming up in 2017, and just have to learn from what you've done. But the most important thing is that, as many of the speakers said before, the spirit, the heart of our community, our people, are what makes our cities special. And what makes San Mateo special is that we work together to make San Mateo County special and our region special. So on behalf of the Redwood City Council, on behalf of the Redwood City community, you have my heartfelt congratulations on your centennial anniversary. And I apologize, I don't think I'm going to be around for your 200th, but I hope to be here for your 150th. Congratulations.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you very much, and thanks to Redwood City. Cliff Lenz, Brisbane.
And, you know, when I first, when I first did San Bruno, I was a young boy. I grew up in South San Francisco, and I remember playing at San Bruno Park and in the creek and just, you know, it's had just very wonderful memories of how safe and comfortable and peaceful San Bruno was. And it's amazing, even though that was a long time ago, San Bruno still feels the same today. And, you know, it's nice hearing the, you know, folks talk about, yeah, San Bruno from the past and how it's still very much that same family-oriented, blue-collar, you know, help each other out type of city today as it was back then. And, you know, Brisbane just celebrated its 50th anniversary, though we've been around for a long time. And, you know, we just were incorporated a little bit later in life. But to be 100 is a pretty amazing accomplishment. And, you know, even, even though there has been some tragedy, you know, recently, you know, it's amazing how your community did rally together and, you know, and you're not staying in the past, you're moving forward, and there's some great things that are ahead for you guys. So congratulations on your anniversary, and I wish the best of luck for the next 100 years.
Thank you, Cliff. And to the people of Brisbane. And from the San Bruno Park School District, Patrick Flynn.
I'd just like to say thank you for participating in our 100-year anniversary previously, and we look forward to working together over the next 100 years to make San Bruno even better than what it is now. It's fantastic. We love it. We love our relationship with you as a school district. And, you know, we're really appreciative of everything you've done for us and how well we've worked together over the last 100 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. And please thank the Board of Directors in the district. In addition to what you've heard this evening from our guests, we have received proclamations from South San Francisco, from Narita, Japan, from Millbrae, from Hillsborough, from San Carlos, from Pacifica, from Colma, from Woodside, from San Mateo, from Portola Valley, from East Palo Alto, from Burlingame, and the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors. So once again, thanks to everyone. We really appreciate it, and we're glad you could be part of our centennial. And at this time, we're going to take a short break and have a little coffee and some cookies and have a chance to celebrate in person. Thank you.[1198.83]
I'd like to call the San Bernadette City Council meeting back to order, please. We're going to go right to 10C, which has adopted a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with NCE to provide technical design assistance for the 2014-15 street rehabilitation project in an amount not to exceed $73,600.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, Jimmy Tan with the Public Services Department. The city's capital improvement program includes the street rehabilitation program to repair and perform preventive managements to local collector and arterial streets. In April of this year, the city completed pavement condition survey with funding assistance from Metropolitan Transportation Commission. MTC hired a consultant firm, JG3, to assess the street conditions and update the pavement condition index, otherwise known as PCI, in the Street Saver Pavement Management software. JG3 also evaluated various budget scenarios to determine the funding required to increase the overall city's street PCI network. The result of the study was presented to the Surface Infrastructure Subcommittee on June 30th of this year. This project, the 2014-2015 street rehab project, is a project within the street rehabilitation program to improve the street conditions. The streets for the projects were derived from the draft five-year street resurfacing schedule, which was previously discussed with the Surface Infrastructure Subcommittee and currently posted on the city's website. Most of the streets identified within the 2014 and 2015 lists are included in the project. For design, the project requires technical design assistance from consultant firm to evaluate the pavement condition information that was completed by JG3 and perform assessment of the existing pavement conditions and provide recommendations on cost-effective treatments for the pavements. The city requested a proposal from NCE, which is formerly known as Nichols Consulting Engineers, to assist with providing the technical design assistance. And C is a qualified consulting firm that specializes in pavement design and has extensive experience with the city's pavement network through their previous work in updating the city's pavement management system in 2011. And C also has provided the city with similar technical design assistance in 2012 Street Resurfacing Program. The scope of services for NCE is to assist with the design work. The scope includes pavement deflection testing to evaluate the structural capacity of the existing pavement section, pavement condition surveys, and corrings to refine the appropriate pavement rehab treatments, and reviewing the pavement core data that's been collected on the field, and development pavement design recommendations report for these streets identified. The report will also evaluate the cost-effective rehab treatments, such as coating, place recycling, and full depth recommendation for street sections. Staff will use the recommendations from NCE and put together a design, plans, and specifications and cost estimates. The design is anticipated to be completed in April 2015 and awarded construction contract in June for summer construction. Currently, there is an available amount of $742,000 and $82,000 from 2013 and 14 CIP, which will be carried over into the proposed 2014-15 CIP and used for NCE and staff design support. The reason for this is that the $800,000 allocated from the program last year was not used to rehabilitate any of the streets. Staff has requested additional appropriation of $500,000 from Measure A and $300,000 from gas tax for a total of $542,000 and $82,000 to fund the construction phase. Therefore, staff is recommending to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with NCE to provide technical design assistance for this project in an amount not to exceed $73,600.
Any questions of staff?
Through the chair.
Ken.
I was throwing my voice.
Michael.
Thank you. I had a few comments just regarding, well, initially I had questions about why we're hiring consultants to look at work that consultants have done, and it just seemed like a whole lot of consultants, and we have a pretty limited streets budget, and, you know, just spending all this time doing studies and spending all the money on the consultants and not actually fixing any streets just didn't sound like we were making very good progress. I also noticed that out of the last four street segments that were on the schedule, only two of them got done, and two of them are getting carried over, right? Am I reading that correctly? So I just had to ask, I mean, isn't there something we can do to be a little more efficient? Couldn't we have started this assessment sooner rather than waiting, you know, time it with the, you know, with the start of the summertime construction season? Couldn't we've done some of that core analysis and, you know, starting to figure out what's underneath there, what kind of thing we need to do sooner rather than wait and then spend, I think, several months since that initial study was done? So it's taking a long time, and the streets are, you know, the sewers, nobody complains about the sewers until they overflow, but the streets, people see them every day and they have to drive on them. they have to drive on them every day, and it tends to be, you know, the topic that comes up most often when we talk with residents, that, you know, their streets are torn up and they want to know when they're going to get fixed. So I did look on the website, and I saw that we have the five-year plan, and it looks like we've identified four street segments that are on there. But I was hoping that we could also make available to the residents the whole list of all the streets, so they can see where their particular street ranks, and they can maybe make some kind of a reasonable assessment about when their street might actually be on the schedule, and maybe look at some of the other streets that are worse off than theirs and understand why we need to prioritize the way we do. So somewhere in there was a question, just, you know, what can we do to compress the schedule? Is there anything we can do to make this happen faster?
Correct. Just going back to your part regarding the hiring of the consulting firms, you know, there are two consulting firms that were part of this project. The JG3 was hired by MTC through grant funding, so the city wasn't, you know, didn't put too much funds into it. It was part of the pavement management technical assistance program, which is called PTAP, which it's granted to the city jurisdictions every two years. So, you know, we had a portion, a small share of the cost that went into for JG3 to perform the pavement survey work. For NCE, it's a separate consulting contract, which the city is requiring this technical design assistance to provide us the information for these pavement deflection testing information and pavement corrings, so that we can determine the most feasible rehab alternative for these street sections. In regards to the schedule, I, you know, it was, you know, the survey was completed in April of 2015, and, you know, I guess during the summer, you know, by designing these street sections, it would have taken, you know, several more months to design, and it would have gone into the winter months. So, you know, construction of the street sections during the winter is, you know, not warranted. So now, we're looking ahead to make sure that these streets that are upcoming in the future will be constructed during the summertime.
If I may add, this pavement management is like a marriage of art and science. You have pavements that are deteriorating, but you also have to make sure that you spend the money at the right time for each pavement section in order to get the most out of it. If you look at the list of city streets, and each one of them has a pavement condition index associated with it, depending on where you're going to spend your money, you're going to get a different result. Sometimes you spend your money on pavement that is not as deteriorated as the next street over. So if you're looking as a resident, looking at it and say, okay, my street is, let's say, PCI of 50, and the next street is PCI of 40, so PCI of 40 is in worse condition, however, the analysis may show that it's better if you spent a little money on PCI of 50 rather than put a lot of money on PCI of 40. Because at PCI 50, if you don't spend the money, it will deteriorate faster, and you will lose the money in the long term. So it's a form of art, and at every point in time, it's going to change. That's why you have to really know exactly what condition you are in at the time when you want to spend your money, to see how far this small amount of money that you have every year could extend the life of the overall condition of your pavements throughout the city.
If I could just add an additional comment, and that is that staff has spent a great deal of time, this is a very, as the acting director has indicated, not a straightforward discussion. It really involves art, science, policy, and community perception, and funding. We are actively in the process of evaluating a variety of scenarios that would provide options to the city council to address the bigger picture perspective of the city's not something to brag about overall condition index citywide, and believe that this topic actually warrants a study session all by itself, and are hoping to be able to schedule that shortly after the first of the year. So this is an important, complicated topic, and they certainly, I'm not sure the staff adequately answered the question about your specific question about could we have done this faster? And I'll ask them to do that. What I would say is that it would be in the best interests of getting something done to move forward at the latest now, and then allow us the opportunity to come back to you and give you a much more thoughtful and comprehensive presentation.
One final thought. I know with the underground infrastructure, there's been a lot of emphasis in doing the GIS mapping and creating databases of known trouble spots and everything. Are we doing anything similar with streets? And is there an opportunity there to sort of learn a little bit more about that process, maybe becoming more proactive and being able to do more of this type of analysis in-house rather than having to bring in consultants for it?
Currently, the staff does not have the expertise to do the analysis in StreetSaver, but, you know, as, you know, they're learning through the consulting firm, I think eventually we're going to get away from using consultants and doing the analysis ourselves. And because the staff has already gone through a training for the StreetSaver, the software program in October, so she's got some experience with that now. So I think hopefully in the future, we do not have to use the consulting firms.
Okay, thank you. And regarding just the database of trouble spots, are you guys doing that for streets?
Yes.
You are? Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I just wanted to add on, I appreciate what my colleague is asking, and I always need to be reminded, when was the last time the subcommittee met? And I guess it was in June. I'm frustrated also, because I know, being on the subcommittee, I know the condition of the streets, and I know that we're, it's a constant battle to keep up. All we can do is keep up. It's not realistic financially for us, you know, to improve all our streets, you know, in the near future. We have to just keep up and accept, you know, a certain index, a certain level. But it does, it's frustrating on how slow it takes. It's frustrating that there are streets out there that appear to be in worse condition than the ones that are getting resurfaced. And so if I'm going to be on the subcommittee, or if we're going to, you know, really give our community an idea of, you know, that we're making some headway in repairing their streets, then yes, maybe we do need, you know, a study session. We do need, we need to have a better idea of what's, you know, what to expect and how this program is going. I don't need to be the guy testing the, you know, the surfaces or anything, but I need to have a better idea, and maybe a field trip, and maybe, you know, something that's a little more hands-on as to, you know, understanding, you know, what it's about. Because I do get it as far as a consultant's concerned. I do understand, you know, what Ray said as far as how complicated it is to take something that needs total repaving versus, you know, a slurry seal, you know, and how much those costs are, and how much those costs vary day to day, you know, so, looking forward to it.
Okay, Rico.
Ken and my colleague had said that we're just trying to keep up, and I would say that, but we're falling behind. And so we're not having enough monies or resources that are being put into the streets to bring them up to where they should be. A new resident comes into Euclid, first thing when I introduce myself is they want to introduce me to their street, which has a rating of 29, which they said as a new resident, that their tire was slashed because of that. Welcome to San Bruno. So this is something that I think for 2015, we need to come up with some outside-the-box thoughts on how we're going to increase funding, which is only limited, of course. That's why I made a suggestion, hopefully at the CIP, that we're going to find out how much monies from the trust may be coming to the fund, when I say back to the city for reimbursement for the staff hours, and to have that put off to the side, to possibly consider that, it's only going to be a shot in the arm one time, but we need to start doing some things, and we need to think outside the box. And it is hard to try to tell a resident when they see that street again. I understand the theory of the science and the art and all of that. I know when I've asked, and I've asked a couple times now, is when we start to have streets brought before us, that we also show when the last time that street was paved, slurried, or whatever the words are, so that we do have a comparison. Because I'm asked that question, and to me, in the last four years, it was done. And maybe I'm right, maybe I'm wrong. But I'd like to have that placed when we get this information, so we have a clear understanding. Thank you.
Anyone else? We're asking for a resolution on this item?
I'll introduce a resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Item 10, Conduct of Business, Adopt a Resolution Authorizing Dedication of City-Owned Property at 470 San Mateo Avenue in Honor of the City's Centennial.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, in conjunction with the year-long celebration and various events to commemorate the city's centennial, that's 100th anniversary of incorporation, there has been some discussion among the city council about the opportunity or the possibility of providing a permanent commemorative location that would be visible and would be an opportunity to provide additional acknowledgement of the city's centennial and the meaning that that has within the community. The proposal that's in front of you tonight is for your consideration of dedication of the city-owned property at 470 San Mateo Avenue for that purpose. This property, as I believe the city council is well aware, was for many years an unimproved vacant lot that existed, as I said, for many years following the demolition of the former Wells Fargo building in the mid-1990s. More recently, in approximately late 2007, early 2008, the property was improved at a fairly minimal level with some landscaping and the installation of a fountain, so that it could, instead of blighting the downtown environment, could provide an amenity. That improvement has been maintained and has provided a, not only improved appearance, but has generated a desirable sort of spot to be welcomed in the downtown, to have an opportunity to see the, one of the first installations of the city's public art program, which is a mural that was installed at roughly the same time. That property not only has an interesting history, including a failed attempt, a diligent attempt by the city to develop the property for a productive business use, given its central location in the downtown, that occurred in approximately 2005. But more recently, as part of the dissolution of redevelopment in the state of California, this property was considered under the requirements of the state's Redevelopment Dissolution Act as candidate for a requirement that the property be sold and the proceeds transferred to the county for distribution to local taxing entities. That requirement pertains to any property that was purchased with or was owned by the former redevelopment agency, and that is the case, purchased by the agency or with redevelopment funds. And although this property is owned by the city, it does have a history of having been purchased with redevelopment funds. Those issues were considered by the Oversight Board to this accessory agency of the San Bruno Redevelopment Agency in October of 2013. And at that time, the Oversight Board determined that ownership of the property could remain with the city so long as a deed restriction was placed on the title of the property to identify that that situation could remain as long as the property remained in public park or public plaza uses, but that any different use of the property would cause the requirements of the state's redevelopment dissolution law to kick in, and the property would need to be sold and/or the city would need to provide the current market value of that property to the county for the purpose of distribution to the taxing entities. So the property is now deed restricted for the purpose of public park or public plaza use under the jurisdiction and control of the city. It has not, it has no formal identification or name, and is, as I said, an amenity in the downtown that is consistent with the vision of the transit corridors plan, which calls for consideration of the development of public open space, green space, park, or plaza areas within the downtown area as a means of encouraging and enhancing the experience of people using the business and restaurants and other activities in the downtown, encouraging the opportunity for pedestrians to enjoy the environment and to have an experience that makes them want to return. Switch gears just a moment and speak for a couple of minutes regarding our recent consideration of centennial-related activities, and specifically, one of the initiatives to provide a long-term identification or commemoration of the centennial is a joint project that the city council approved approximately two months ago with the Rotary Club of San Bruno to place a time capsule that would be funded and donated by the Rotary Club to the city to be installed on city property in a visible location to be open 50 years from now. Again, this is an initiative to commemorate and celebrate the centennial. The city council considered and agreed with the centennial subcommittee's recommendation in October to place the centennial time capsule at the back door to City Hall as a location that would have some amount of foot traffic and would be visible to the public, and frankly, wouldn't be forgotten 50 years from now, would still be somewhere where people would notice it and be able to find it when it's time to open it on December 23, 2064. As part of the consideration about the idea of dedicating an area of our city or a facility and amenity within the city in honor of the centennial, further discussion has been underway about the possibility of locating the time capsule at the lot at 470 San Mateo Avenue in conjunction with the city council's consideration to dedicate that property in honor of the centennial. The item before you tonight is not necessarily about the time capsule, but it's about the idea of making a permanent gesture towards the commemoration of the centennial and to combine that by dedicating the lot at 470 San Mateo Avenue, and to combine that with the location of the time capsule, which is intended to be installed on December 23 of 2013. The the location of the time capsule, which is intended to be installed on December 23 of this year in order that it can be properly in place during the centennial year. So, with that, the item that is in front of you tonight is specifically consideration of dedication of that downtown property in honor and in commemoration of the city's centennial. The staff report provides a couple of suggested names, although anything that conveys the concept of park, public space, open space, plaza would be consistent with the deed restriction that is currently in place. So with that, the staff report recommends your consideration of dedicating in honor of the centennial by calling this area Centennial Park, Centennial Plaza, or potentially Centennial Square. With that, I welcome your conversation and your direction.
Any questions for the city manager? Ken?
Geez, how times have changed. I remember Irene's mother. I remember being on this council and sitting in, used to be an Italian restaurant that is now West Coast Cafe, but discussing what we were going to do about that property. And I sat with Irene, with Marina Kaiser, and very much wanted that parcel to be a park. It was not the sentiment of my colleagues on the council, I know it was Irene's sentiment. So, I believe it is appropriate. I think any time capsule would serve better in something in that location than the back door of City Hall. I do have one concern, and people that know me know that I'm one of the biggest supporters of the San Bruno Rotary Club. But I'm going to say right now, I do not, if the change in name or of a change of this thing comes forward and it becomes sponsored by whoever, it should be an opportunity for any organization to come forward for this park. I understand that the Rotary came forward, and the Rotary is named several times in this staff report, and it's my understanding that they offered to provide the time capsule. And then it's also been explained that it's a joint project. So, I'd like every opportunity to have, every organization to have an opportunity, instead of a certain organization coming forward and, you know, and making a, you know, proposing a project with the city, a partnership with the city.
If I might quickly respond, just in case the staff report created any confusion, the...
I'm not confused at all as to the staff report. I am concerned that Centennial Park will be an opportunity for an organization to, you know, to want to further, you know, their notoriety in the community. And I'm saying if it happens to be, then it should be an opportunity for any and all organizations to, you know, to make that proposal.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Through the chair.
Michael?
I'm definitely in favor of having something in our city commemorate the centennial. I'm just not sure that this particular lot is the place to do it. And I understand the restrictions that are placed on it and what we can do with it. But I think now that we have the height restrictions removed and we're looking at potential development, I'm sure that between now and 50 years from now, when the time capsule gets opened, we'll probably get a few more buildings down there. And I just want to make sure that if we commemorate this lot right now and call it Centennial Something, that we're not going to lock ourselves into saying that we can't now develop this piece of property. Because I think that there will be some demand for doing something larger, something more in line with the drawings we've seen and the ideas that are put out there about how downtown should look. And having this one little gap in there that just happens to be there by accident because the Wells Fargo building deteriorated and we had to tear it down, doesn't seem like a master plan. It seems more like a lot that's there by accident, and so now we're going to lock ourselves to always keeping that there. I think at some point, it may actually look awkward to have a space there. So, I want to make sure that we don't lock ourselves into anything. And if we are going to dedicate something as Centennial, I think it should be something more lasting, not something that might be there just because we didn't want weeds growing in an empty lot. So, I don't know, maybe we can, can I get some just input in terms of, you know, does this lock us into anything? And also commentary on, you know, from my colleagues about whether, I mean, is that the intention that this is now, this is it forever and we're never going to develop that area?
Times have been changing.
If I may?
Irene?
Thank you. While the placement of the lot is sort of accidental, the idea of having a park-like setting with public art in it as an attraction for downtown is something that, at least my family, has worked for for a long, long time. And part of the beauty of it is that it is at the intersection of Genovin and it is visible from El Camino. So, as you drive by and you look right or you're stopping at that stoplight and you look to the right, you can see something beautiful that's part of our city. So, while I understand your issues about development and I can understand why that might be an awkward situation, my understanding of the laws right now is that if somebody approaches us to say they want to buy that land, it's no longer our land per se to sell, or we can sell it, but the money doesn't go to us, or we can't sell it, it has to be sold by the county.
Yeah, no, you can sell it. It is, it remains in title ownership by the city. However, deed restricted such that if you were to sell it or you were to develop it, the proceeds at the value, at the then-current value of the property would need to be remitted to the county. So, you would not be able to, you can't recover the investment. You can make that decision, but you cannot keep the money that would be generated by the sale of the property.
Okay. So, which I know is not really part of your, I mean, it's part of your consideration, but you're looking at it over your picture. Anyway, in my opinion, it adds a great deal to this downtown, and it fortuitously opens up the back parking lot, the public parking lot, so people can park there and walk forward without having to go through different stores, which I know we all awkwardly do occasionally to access that part of San Mateo Avenue. So, I for one, understand what you're saying. I would love to come back in 100 years and see the park still there and maybe even expand it next door. So, if you ever go to San Carlos on Laurel Drive, they had the very same situation. They had a dilapidated building, and the city owned the lot, but they were not doing anything with it. And in that city, the business owners went to the city and demanded that it become a plaza the way it is now, if you ever get a chance to see it. Very similar to ours, opens up to the back, to the back public parking. It's at an intersection, it looks lovely, people enjoy it, and it adds to the downtown. So, it's rather a long-winded comment, but since I don't always talk much, I can get to do it this time. So, I'm in favor of keeping it forever and ever. I think the artwork adds to it. I think every time I drive by there, and I drive by there at least two or three times a week, somebody's sitting there enjoying it. So, I for one, think it should be called Centennial. I think if people object to the word park because they can't go play in it, that's fine with me. Centennial Plaza works just as well, or Centennial Square, either, I don't really care. But I think it would be, it's an opportunity, call something that I hope would be permanent, Centennial Plaza.
Rico?
I appreciate the comments, and I know how long that has sat there. I remember when the city bought it, and it was to have skin in the game and show the merchants on San Mateo Avenue that the city owned property. And obviously, that sat, and then it was demolished and the fence went up, and it sat. And it sat until about $20,000 was spent by staff, not by consultants, to bring it up to something that was better, so we led by example. I don't call it a park, because to me, that is not a park. It's not in our park system, so anything can be added. I don't think it's gone to the Park and Rec Commission. I have the concern also as far as saying, well, this is final. Measure N just passed, and if a developer came and said, "The dojo next to it is vacant, and we want to take that and develop it," yes, it would get sold, and we could, and yes, we'd only get a part of the monies that have been invested, but we would then have that opportunity. One of the concerns, I know when we talked about the time capsule, was at the parks over here, the rec center area. Well, the thought was, well, what if? What if a pool gets developed? What if the rec center changes? Then therefore, you've got to unbury it. So, I think the time capsule, if you're going to put it there, then it's kind of a done deal. And yeah, sure, you can undo it, and we can store it somewhere, and hopefully we'll find it, and then we can move it somewhere, and it doesn't get tossed out or something. But I think that the reason that City Hall came up was just so that we knew where it was, because we didn't perceive City Hall was going to be going away anytime soon or developed, honestly. I do have a concern, because I think, like I said, there's opportunity, and I think that we ought to have those opportunities available to us. I know that the council, we voted to buy Florida, and there's going to be a lot that some have discussed about maybe being a park, that's not decided, of course, it was just discussion. So, we're going to have another park there. We also need to fund things, Park and Loufie's are about done, I believe, with that purchase. And again, I don't find this a park. So, I'm concerned about us being solid in one spot and saying, this is it, and it's fine.
Okay, a lot has changed in this city over the last 19 years. When we tore down the old Wells Fargo building, the reason, of course, it's not open, and a lot of people don't realize it, is because a lot of the foundation is still in existence. So, it could actually be a danger to try to have people walk in and around it through that place. The other thing that happened is the opportunity that our Transit Corridors Plan is giving us for open space in the downtown. And instead of trying to develop open space in the downtown, it's there already. We already have it. And people can build around it, and it's still there. It's accessible from Genovin, from San Mateo Avenue. Hopefully, we'll do something with the parking lot in the back. But I think it's an opportunity that exists that we really don't have to do a whole lot to achieve, to get. I'm for putting that time capsule there, and maybe, who knows, some extraordinary opportunity will come up in the future. But for now, I think it's a great spot. I'd like to see it as Centennial Plaza or Centennial Square, and maybe embellish it a little bit with some more things on that particular site as we go forward. But it could be a perfect opportunity for the public to view more public art other than what's there now. And like I said, it's there already. It is part of our Transit Corridors Plan, and what we wanted with that plan was open space in the downtown. And I think it just fits. The opportunity is there, and I think we should really take advantage of it. Any more discussion or action by the council? Michael?
In my previous comments, I had asked for some feedback from staff in terms of, you know, how permanent a decision this is. So, if somebody made us an offer we couldn't refuse at some point down the road, would this decision tonight preclude us from doing that?
There's no, there would be no technical or legal impediment to the city council making a different policy decision. I would say, however, that you vest a certain community identity by dedication of the property, and that would be the only issue, but again, that's a policy issue. And then the only technical or legal issue would be, you would not be able to keep the proceeds of transfer of that property.
Right, right. And I see that as a sunk cost anyway, because there's no way we're going to recoup what was paid for that lot. So, it would have been nice to get community input on the whole concept, but I know that we're definitely out of, we're running out of 2014, and we have to make a decision. So, thank you.
On what Michael was saying, I would like to open it up to the community. I mean, as much as I'm in favor of placing this time capsule there, and at least part of the council is in favor of keeping it a park or a plaza, I'd like to know what the community thinks, because I'd like to see it opened up. I'd like to see it, you know, become more permanent and be more like the park in San Carlos, and let people walk through and actually see, you know, see some of the public art up close. And if that means investment, if that means maybe, you know, digging up the time capsule and moving it somewhere within that park, I'm not that sensitive to that permanence of placing it in the ground and not touching it for 50 years. But then again, any council can come forward and, you know, policy change can happen. But I think it's time that the communities, if not the entire community, at least the Park and Rec Commission, the Planning Commission, and members of the Culture and Arts Committee, you know, to voice their opinion of what they envision of the future of this space.
Through the chair, the only one thing I wanted to say is, the foundation may be, but also, I think, Mr. Mayor, you and I sat on a subcommittee on that, and there was discussion about having it open. And the reason we didn't suggest that, because it was a temporary fix, and we want to minimize cost. So, there was already a drawing of having it go around the fountain and a walkway and seats, and we opted and brought back to the council, which approved, was just because it was temporary for a minimal expense. That's just my memory.
And there's nothing to say we can't do that in the future and still keep it as a plaza or a square or whatever we want to call it. I think the issue tonight is, if you're all right with it, we relocate the projected burial of the time capsule to that particular area, and then we're asking for a resolution to dedicate that property in honor of the city's centennial. So, what would you like to do?
I move that we move the burial place, sounds so bad, the burial place of the Centennial Time Capsule to the 470 San Mateo Avenue site, and that we call that site Centennial Plaza.
Okay.
Will that, does the resolution say those things?
Yes.
Main property, okay. But it doesn't say naming it Centennial.
Depending on the city council's action, we can make that relatively minor adjustment so that the resolution accurately reflects the council's action.
Okay. So, with that said, I'll introduce the resolution with that change.
Okay.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
No.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Reported commissions, boards, and committees, there aren't any this evening. Comments from council members? Anything?
How can you not comment about this weekend? I'd just like to say that I had a great time. I believe everyone that was there Saturday at our Centennial Gala had a wonderful time. So pleased that it's over with. Yeah, I mean, the anticipation and everything, and I, not being, I mean, it was a nice surprise. It was a very pleasant surprise for me. And I want to compliment our staff, specifically Carrie Burns with her planning, and all staff that was involved in the subcommittee, and the entertainers, you know, and everyone that provided services there had a wonderful time, very memorable time. So, thank you very much.
I have to echo that also. Carrie and Jennifer and Amy, as well as everyone that was involved, did one wonderful job. We've been working on... We've been working on this, the centennial, since, well, most of this year, and I guess got into this skyline in the summertime and didn't quite know how it was going to look and how, but it was spectacular and nothing but rave reviews. Very, very good and a wonderful way to celebrate our 100th birthday, so thank you all very much. Anyone else? All right, closed session. We already had a closed session. Adjournment, I would like to, in adjourning this meeting, the last one of 2014, wish everyone happy holiday, Merry Christmas, and a very happy and safe New Year. Meeting adjourned.